Okay, I'm going to call the September 2nd regular meeting of the City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Chen?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Pilton Mann?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. We move to item three, the invocation. Pastor Isaac Kim, where's Pastor? Welcome. Pastor Isaac Kim, Good News LA Church, also known as Good News Central Church, will provide the invocation tonight, followed by a performance from Ms. Elisa Clayton, the Little Stars Kids Choir conductor. Ms. Clayton is a soprano, currently pursuing her Doctor of Musical Arts in a vocal performance at Claremont Graduate University. She also holds a Masters of Music from the City and University of New York and has performed at prestigious venues, including the Gracias Choir. So Pastor, will you lead us in the invocation, please?
Yes. Let us pray. 하나님 감사합니다.
God, we thank you.
LA는 사람을 살수 없는 사막이었는데.
LA used to be an uninhabitable place.
콜로라도 강에 흐르는 물과 연결됐을 때이 도시가 사람 살기에 좋은 아주 아름다운 도시가 되었습니다.
But when the city of Los Angeles became connected with the Colorado River, it became a very beautiful place to live.
우리의 마음도 그렇습니다.
And same with our hearts.
혼돈되고 공허하고 흐감 속에 있는 마음이었는데.
Our hearts used to be and dwell in darkness, chaos, and emptiness.
우리 스스로 우리를 바꿀 수 없지만.
And although we could not change ourselves.
우리 마음이 하나님과 연결되면 하나의 힘이 흘러들어와서 우리를 바꿀 수 있습니다.
But when our hearts are connected to God, the power of God can flow through us and change us.
하나님에게는 거룩함이 있고 의로움이 있고.
God has holiness and righteousness.
하나님에게 행복함이 가득한데.
And God is full of happiness.
그런 하나님의 마음과 우리 마음이 연결된다면 우리가 세상 누구보다도 귀하고 복된 삶을 살게 될줄 믿습니다.
And when our hearts are connected with the heart of God, we can live the most beautiful and precious lives here on earth.
뉴스를 보면 총기 사고도 있고.
And when we see the news, there are news of mass shootings.
많은 사람들이 마약으로 고통 가운데 있는 거 우린 볼수 있습니다.
And we see many people suffering because of drug addiction.
이 템플 도시도 하나님의 마음과 연결된다면 하나님의 그 거룩함 흘러들어와서.
And we believe that if the Temple City is connected with the heart of God, God's holiness will flow through to this city.
이 도시를 제약에서 벗어나게 하고 행복하고 사람이 살기 가장 아름다운 도시로 하나의 만들 줄 믿습니다.
And we believe that God will make it the most beautiful city that will free people from temptations.
하나님의 의로움이 우리 마음을 의롭게 하고.
And Lord, your righteousness makes our heart righteous.
하나님의 거룩함이 우리 마음을 거룩하게 하며.
And if your holiness makes our heart holy.
하나님의 행복한 마음이 템플 도시를 행복하게 할줄 믿습니다.
We believe that your heart can also make the hearts of the people of Temple City filled with happiness.
하나님께 감사드립니다.
We thank you, Lord.
하나님의 이름으로 기도했습니다.
In the Lord's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. 감사합니다.
Thank you. Amen. Thank you, Ms. Clayton. If you come up and get ready, I'd like to share that the church provides service on Sundays at 10:00 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. and Wednesdays at 7:20 p.m. Services are offered in English, Korean, and Chinese. Upcoming church events include monthly prayer breakfast every Saturday of the month at 8:30 a.m. and the next prayer breakfast is on Saturday, September 6th. Thank you so much. What a beautiful sentiment. Count your blessings and not your regrets. Thank you so much, Ms. Clayton. All right. We, yes, it's after. Emilio Madrigal, would you please come up and/or stand up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Emilio, where are you?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Do it right there from there or wherever you'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move to ceremonial matters, presentations. Champions of the 2025 American Youth Soccer Organization Region 98's 13-U Boys and 14-U Girls Soccer Teams. The council will be recognizing these two teams with their athletes tonight. Region 98's Boys 13-U Soccer Team and the Region 98 Girls 4-U Soccer Team. I think I said that. The council will recognize the accomplishment of the team, then invite the players to come up to receive their certificates and stay for a group picture. We're going to do them individually. The Region 98 Boys will come up first. And when we finish with both groups, I just want to share with the audience, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you feel that you need to leave, please by all means, get up and leave and I will wait for you to leave before we finish the rest of the meeting. So the achievements of the Temple City Titans. Region 98 Boys 13-U Soccer Team, champions of the 2025 AYSO National Games. This year, the tournament was held in Irvine, Orange County, from July 21st through the 27th, and brought together the top competitive teams from across the nation. Among them was Region 98's very own Boys 13-U Team, the Temple City Titans, who competed in seven games over five consecutive days. They won every match, scored a total of 19 goals, and remarkably did not concede a single one. Wow. This championship not only highlights the talent and resilience of these young athletes, but also reflects the strong support of their families, the community, and the volunteers of Region 98. I'm going to ask my colleagues to come up and help me pass out the certificates and then please stay up here and Mr. Jan Bazian will take a group picture and then we'll go into doing the other group. If you'll come up?
Yeah.
So these are all certificate of recognition. And the first one goes to Josiah Garcia. Maxwell Sembile. Maxwell Gomez. Curtis Chan. Dylan Waris. Jalen Chambers. Adrian Ramirez. Estelle Garcia. Alec Tudharian. Matthew Erzula. Noah Consulman. Raymond Ha. Logan Chavez. Elias Yan. Michael Gonzalez. Henry Wong. James Consulman. And Armin Tudharian. That had coach, let's give him an extra round of applause. And we also have the assistant coach, James Consulman. Let's give him a big round of applause. Thank you so much. And now we'll move on to the girls, so if you'd like to stay up there, sorry, you can. Okay. Region 98's Girls 14-U Soccer Teams. Also with us tonight is the Temple City Football Team, Region 98 Girl Soccer Team. The City Council recognizes the outstanding achievement of the girls' champions in the GU14 Advanced Bracket of the 2025 AYSO National Game. This year, the tournament was held in Irvine, Orange County, also from July 21st through the 27th, 2025. The team competed in seven games over five consecutive days. They won all seven games undefeated. Wow. This championship highlights the talent and resilience of these young athletes also and reflects the strong support of their coaches, families, and the community, and the volunteers of Region 98. Players, please come up to receive your certificates when you are called and also please stay up for a picture. And we, we have certificates for the coaches. We have an assistant coach also?
I'm the coach.
But do we have an assistant also? If assistant could come up, coach can come up also. It's nice to have both of you up here. Okay, first one is Julia Madera. Gabriel Forster. This is our team manager. They're not in any order, so bear with us. Penny Gonzalez. Isabella Barragon. Iana Perry. Giselle Montero. Gianna Kano. Sofia Lopez. Aubrey Agiri. Sadie Solomon? Or is it Sadie? Sadie? Sadie, okay. Cassandra Perez. Lila Forster. Emma Rosario. Haley Ramirez. Alexandra Ramirez. Janina Brown. Frank Madera. I think he's just a little proud of this team. Julio Sanchez. The team manager, Gabriel Forster. Do you have two? Well, you have double certificates. So one more round of applause, then we're going to take a picture and then you all may leave if you'd like. So I understand this is the first time this has happened where we've had the girls' championship and the boys' championship team. That's amazing. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Ms. Clayton, can you come up to take a picture? Annie? Can she come and take a picture?
Thank you once again. Thank you.
Okay, we move to item B. Proclamation honoring California's 175th Anniversary of Statehood. Tonight, the City Council would also like to recognize the 175th Anniversary of California Statehood. In 2025, California proudly marks 175 years of statehood, celebrating its admission to the Union on September 9th, 1850. This historic milestone reflects California's enduring contributions to the nation through its rich history, cultural diversity, and its role as a leader in innovation and progress. The observance of this anniversary provides an opportunity to honor the state's legacy and reaffirm a collective commitment to its continued growth and prosperity. All right, and Peggy, you have the proclamation to submit, if anyone would like to see it. Thank you. We move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The City Council will now hear public comments regarding items that are not listed. If there is anyone who wish to speak, please make sure that you have filled out a public comment card. So our first one is Jing Li. Welcome, Jing.
Good evening, Mayor Sternquist and City Council. This is Jing Li from Temple City Library. Tonight, we also have Chris Candelaria and our regional assistant and visitor in the audience with me as well. In September, we have lots of exciting programs for the Temple City community. We would like to invite all students to participate in the LA County Library 46 Annual Bookmark Contest. This is a new program that increase a lot of book and reading, will also promote creativity, artistic expression, and community engagement. The students will have a chance to have their bookmark designed featured at local library throughout the LA County. The participant will compete in the following category. Kindergarten to second grade, third grade to fifth grade, sixth to eighth grade, and ninth to twelfth grade. The completed entry form can be dropped off at the local library or sent by mail or submit online through our website. The deadline for the entry will be October 18th. The winner bookmark will be shared, from each library will be shared with a board of supervisor, who will select the winner from, that lived in their own, in their district, from each category. The winners selected by the board of supervisor will be recognized by the board next year in the spring. September is also the library card sign-up month, so come to a library to get your new library card while receiving incentives. In addition, we have story times for young kids, art activity for school-age kids, and also have English conversation club for adults. For more information, please give us a call at 626-285-2136 or visit our website, lacountylibrary.org. I'm here to answer any question you may have. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any members from council? Jing? Thank you, Jing. Okay. Jamie, I don't have a last name, Jamie, please come to the podium.
Good evening, every Temple City residents. I'm Jamie. I used to attend the Live Work Senior Center for lunch. And what I observed is the kitchen has been out of operation for, I think, for a long time, so I put there, I don't know when. Okay? Until now, it's still not working because all the senior citizen there would like to have those hot soup, which will help them especially this coming, next month, can be colder weather. And if anybody could fix that issue, it would be greatly appreciated by all senior of the Temple City. Thank you much.
Thank you, and I can have, if you could give the clerk your phone number, she can call you and follow up on that. So if, thank you. Emilio Madrigal?
Good evening, coun, sorry. Good evening, council members. My name is Emilio Madrigal. My name is Emilio Madrigal, and if you've not met me already, I am one of the students that was very fortunate to go on the Sister City Exchange Program to Australia this past, this past July to August, and I would like to say that it was one of my most unforgettable experiences, and none of it would have been possible without your assistance and without your support. So just as a, as a show of gratitude, I sadly was not able to bring back any koalas, but I brought back something equally as reminiscent of Australia for you all. So sadly, there's not enough cases for everyone to have their own, but sharing is caring, so.
You didn't bring back Vegemite?
I did bring back, I was trying to bring back Vegemite, but I don't think they would have allowed it, so. But, once again, thank you, council members. Thank you for your continuous support, support to the Sister City Association, to all our students. Grandly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Nancy and Steve, I see you back there. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right. And we have one more. Rory McNair?
Good evening. My name is Rory McNair, and I'm here to announce some new cases. LA County Fraud Hotline Case Number 2025-23261 into the conduct of two members of this council, William Mann and Vincent Yu. Three from the FPPC, Brian Cook, 0827-2025-02787. Edward Chavez, 0823-2025-02744. And Peggy Kuo, 0901-2025-02847. And the California State Bar against Burke, Williams, and Sorensen, John Welsh, 25-0-25234. Charles Slindstad, 25-0-25237. Eric Vale, 25-0-25235. Gregory Murphy, 25-0-25236. Sheila Delshod, 25-0-25233. And Stephanie Gutierrez, 25-0-25238. Your own records show you spent 52 grand in just two months to manage this catastrophe with every service description illegally redacted to conceal their actions. So in, it's in this, in this context of documented concealment and taxpayer abuse, that I formally and demand you cure and correct the following violations. First, on June 3, you violated the Brown Act by failing to report out from closed session, then concealed it by deleting 81 minutes from the meeting video. I demand you release the original unedited video and provide a full public report out. Second, on August 15, you illegally locked the public out of this building, then committed a felony by creating a fraudulent public record to conceal it, a record with a physically impossible timeline. I demand a public roll call vote committing the city to never again lock the public out from a building like this. Third, on August 19, your city clerk censored a public comment. I demand you read the entire comment into the record at your next regular meeting as the first item of business. Please be advised that all records related to these violations must be preserved. Your response to these demands will be submitted, submitted as supplemental evidence to the District Attorney and Los Angeles Civil Grand Jury, while I will be presenting this testimony. More to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it for public comment. So I'm going to close public comment. We move to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Mayor, before there's a motion, there are two minor amendments that don't require the items to be pulled. First off, the recommendation is to approve items A through J. There are only items A through I because one item was pulled on the day that the agenda was posted, so we don't actually have an item J. Second, as to item G, that was also changed on the day that the item was posted, and so there is not yet a revised salary schedule for the part-time positions under recommendation number two. There's only the revised schedule for the TCEA represented classifications. So those two don't need to be discussed unless a member would like to discuss it, but the motion should be as, approve the staff recommendation as amended. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any council members want to pull anything else? Okay, we have a public comment on item 7F. Is it Baskin is the last name?
Marisa.
Marie? Okay. Marina?
Marisa.
Marisa, and the last name is?
Baskin.
Baskin, please.
Well, according to this...
If you could please come up to the podium, thank you.
Hi, my name's Marisa Baskin, and I just came to see, this was on the agenda today, and I don't know if you've made a decision about the overnight parking or not, but I'm here as... I'm here...
It's okay.
You're fine. Just take... I'm a guest of your city, and I've been very grateful to be able to be here following the fire. And it would make a huge difference to me to be able to park on the street overnight without, sorry. But anyways, there are a lot of things to hurdle over, and this is one that has taken a fair amount of my time thus far, and I would be very appreciative if you might consider allowing this extension, because it's, it's a hardship, and it's difficult, and I have nowhere to put my car between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. to stay in compliance with the city. And I am doing my best to follow your rules and to do what has been asked, and I'm just letting you know that it would be appreciated, and if you would consider extending my ability to park here until I can establish a residence and move forward.
And I know you've been active already helping with the Women's Club, I believe, or the Relay for Life and different things, so thank you so much. You did well. Didn't have to worry.
Well, I didn't mean to cry. I'm sorry.
We're not as scary as we look.
I know. It's just there's a lot of emotion around all of this, and so...
I know.
I'm sorry for the display, but...
No, please do not be sorry.
Anyways, again, couldn't be more grateful to have had a place to land. You know, the family I'm staying with has been incredibly generous and kind. Their neighbor has been accompanying me tonight. Everybody has been lovely, and if we could just manage a small little thing, it would be huge for me.
Well, thank you very much. We're happy you chose Temple City to come and be, even if it's temporary.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for these. Can we have a motion as recommended by staff without considering J and G, I believe?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar as amended by staff, and of course, including the time extension.
Second.
Second, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. So the extension is in place.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for taking your time, and for coming with her as her support. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We move to item eight, public hearing, none, unfinished business, none, new business, adoption of ordinance number 25-1083, establishing election procedures. And I do not see our Scott Reamer, so Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. This is a perfunctory item that we will go, that the city clerk will briefly go over, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you, city manager, thank you.
Peggy, we can't hear you.
City council. Thank you, council. So again, barring the words of Mr. Cook, this is a perfunctory item where staff is requesting council to establish election procedures for a city's standalone election when not consolidated with county statewide election. Staff is requesting council to introduce for first reading by title only the ordinance and schedule the second reading for the next council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions from council members? Yet? Nope? See, none. I'd like to open public comment. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Going to close public comment. No final questions from council, I see. May I have a motion for this item, please?
Madam Mayor, I move we introduce ordinance number 25-1083 for first reading by title only, establishing various election procedures relating to election model, voting locations, early voting, precinct consolidations, auditing and reporting for the city's general municipal election. To waive further reading of ordinance number 25-1083 and schedule a second reading of ordinance 25-1083 for September 16, 2025.
Second.
Okay, may we have a roll call and then a reading of the ordinance, title of the ordinance, please?
Thank you, mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
Title ordinance number 251083, an ordinance of the city council of City of Temple City, California, establishing various election procedures relating to election style, voting locations, appointment, early voting, auditing, and reporting for the City of Temple City general municipal election. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 11, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. Just one thing, I'd like to thank the residents for their patience over the last few weeks with our residential paving project. We've done an extensive amount of roads and residential streets, one, a couple collectors and arterials, one going on right now, Live Oak between Temple City Boulevard and Baldwin, that's a little bit more impactful, so we've been doing some detours of that, so appreciate everybody's patience. The next big one that will, will close out this project is Santa Anita Avenue from some, from city limit to city limit. That will have a lot of impact on some of the residents on the, on the, that face Santa Anita. If any member of the public's out there and sees an imperfection in the roadway or anything else, please contact us. Contractor is a good job, but they're not perfect. No one is. So we'll, we'll go out, and we actually have a running point, we will, I don't know what the technical term is, but like a punch list of items we have to go back to, and we will go back before we close out, before we close out the contract with OnX paving, we'll go out there and finish those punch, punch list items, and if any corrections or imperfections that need to be smoothed out, or whatever it may be, I, I'm not an engineer, but whatever they, they need to do to correct those things, they'll be doing that. And as I've stated before, this is one of your last big pavement projects that you're going to be able to do. Our funding is tight, and we do not have enough funding to go all the way through, so we are looking for those other revenue sources of the future to make that happen. So, but thank you to our entire team who tries to look for the most cost-effective methodology to deliver repaving of roads. So, thank you.
I, I just want to say that I've received a few emails, a handful, and three of them were very positive, wanting to thank the city council members. I haven't had time to print them out, but I will forward them to Peggy's so that she has, in case any of you would like to see them. And then two of them were just concerns that after the street was paved, that there were people driving on it because they were impatient, and it caused some problems, and they wanted to know what we could do about those people. And I, so I just want to remind the residents, if your street is newly paved, please follow the signs and don't go beforehand.
Yes, and we run into that, and we'll just, we try to tell people, but we'll, we'll do our best to make the corrections on those as well.
Okay.
And lastly, I'd like to thank the dedicated team over the last week since the schools reopening. We've had a really smooth school opening this year compared to prior years, especially with traffic and other things. They've done some education, had to do some enforcement as well for people double parking, and also too, they've done some safety sessions with the students as well, so I appreciate the team going out there and engaging with our students to, just to be safe and know that we and our dedicated team are partners with the community and truly partners with our schools. Appreciate all the principals, assistant principals, and our superintendent truly inviting us and having an open door to their, to their school communities so that we can talk to them, and they understand, and they know our dedicated team. So thank you to our dedicated team. That's it for tonight.
I believe you received the same email from the assistant principal?
Yes, you forwarded that to me, ma'am.
I forwarded it to you, and he was, wanted the council to know that he was very appreciative of Mr. Amaya and the work that he's done going out to the schools, talking about e-bikes and safety and bike riding, so...
Absolutely.
Please pass that on to the council.
I absolutely did. Thank you, mayor. That's it for me tonight, mayor.
Okay. Updates from our city attorney?
Thank you, mayor. Just one update for the council. There's a proposed initiative for 2026 that may be interesting to the council, and you may hear more details about through the fall as they, they start to see if they can get it on the ballot. It would be called Our Neighborhood Voices, and a similar initiative started to gain traction in 2021 and was proposed again for the 2024 ballot, but didn't quite make it because it lost, basically there was a lack of funding. The, Our Neighborhood Voices has started to gain traction in San Diego County in large part because San Diego County was the first to go through the sixth cycle of the regional housing needs allocation, and the cities there are starting to struggle with the way that the RENA obligations and different state overrides on housing are affecting their local control and their local planning. So what the proposed ONV initiative would do is make all of the current mandated state zoning laws and housing requirements optional for cities. Let cities opt in if you think they're good plans and you want to adopt them, but otherwise let cities opt out, which would give the kind of flexibility that we were used to before, say, five or six years ago. The north San Diego County cities, especially the coastal ones, are really driving this. One of the little carve-outs in there is for affordable housing, where any property or any project that comes in with 100% affordable units would still have ministerial approval. And it's their way of saying that we are willing to work with the state, with affordable housing advocates, but on projects that actually are designed to serve the afford, the, the population that needs affordable housing, as opposed to some of the incredibly dense projects that might feature a few units, but mostly are market rate units and are being overbuilt. It's something interesting, it's something to keep your eyes on, like I say, through the fall to see if it gains traction, and if there is a time when they're out asking for city support, you may see it as something that the five of you would discuss throwing the city behind or not, depending on your will. That's what I've got tonight. Thank you.
May I have a quick question? So this is initiative that will be coming, or is it...
It is not currently, has not currently made the ballot yet. They're out gathering signatures.
Okay. All right, item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any this evening? None? All right. We move to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Chavez?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Chen?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Yu?
Nothing to add, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Just a quick shout out to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting a, a nice legislative lunch. I gotta give credit where credit's due, they've done significant improvements over the years, and they have a very engaged board, as well as an engaged presidency... as well as an engaged president, CEO. And I want to thank councilmember Chen for being the liaison.
Okay. Was the chamber night bites before? Was that last council meeting or was it after?
I think it was the last, like, in July, I think it ended July.
Did we speak to it already about how?
We speak to, but you speak to it again?
Okay, well, it was just wonderful. Looking forward to another one. Let's see, there was something else I was going to update on. I can't recall. Anyway, with that, I guess we're going to move to item 15, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Do we have anyone who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments, and we are adjourned.